Say something.
First run I felt.
He doesn't, he doesn't know and he doesn't, he never takes a turn when it's something bad. But when it's something good, I've known him for a while.
Wow.
I've known him for a while.
Yeah, so it's just. Forgot about the rules.
Pushing on, pushing on. No, it's terrible.
Yeah, ow.
Yeah, yesterday as soon as I started drinking that red wine, I was like, I was able to like get up kitchen without go without, without any pain.
That's the name of the game.
It's crazy.
Mm hmm.
Just like one, one glass of wine. Has to be.
Okay, I have six o'clock. We'll go ahead and get started. Um, first up, we have training on this new Civics Plus software. And as an old guy, I'm sure I'm going to flail a lot with this, but I'll keep an open mind. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, I've got Jesse Porqua with Civic Plus on Zoom. He's going to go over the board portal and how you guys will be able to use it. And then after he's done, I was just going to show you what the packet's going to look like. It's very similar. It's just how you navigate it. So Jesse, if you want to go ahead.
Absolutely. Thank you for providing some time for me to show you the board portal today. Just to confirm, can everybody see my screen right now?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, excellent. Um, so we are looking at the homepage for our board portal for select our agenda and meeting management software. And this page is going to be your landing page anytime you log into the portal. And it will initially show any agenda that the city has published. But the thing that's a little tricky about this page to start things off is whenever you log into this to look at an upcoming agenda, the thing you need to remember is always look at the agenda in the top left corner. The dates for our agendas here are going to work in reverse chronological order. That way, a year from now, if you've got 30 agendas in here all published, you don't have to scroll through to the bottom to find the most recent agenda. You'll always want to look for the most top left agenda for the most recent one. Today's is actually the second agenda here because another training that a colleague of mine did was set for, or they set the agenda for a little later this week. So that one's going to show first, but whatever agenda you're looking for, always make sure you're looking at that date because that's going to be a key piece here. Our board portal will allow you to look at a few different types of documents here. The agendas tab, which we're on right now, will show the agenda, the agenda packet and any attached material. So you'll be able to view all of those files either jointly or separately, as you'll see here in a moment. We also have a minute tab at the very bottom of the screen here. This will allow you to look at any minutes publishing or publication. We'll look at that here in just a second. So you can see what that would look like. The notes tab here on the right hand side is a quick way for you to take a look at any notes that you've taken in the board portal. If I switch to it right now, you'll see that it actually shows up blank right now because I haven't taken any notes yet. But after we do some note taking here on our first agenda, this will start to populate and will be a good place to quickly see the notes that you've taken. And then finally, our media tab is for our streaming component, which I don't believe you're utilizing at the moment. So that won't be one you'll have to worry about. It'll really just be the first three here, but mainly the two on the left hand side. That'll be your biggest drivers for your use of this software. Before we get into one of our agendas, just a few extra features here in the portal in general, our filter option in the top left here will allow you to look for specific date ranges or a specific meeting name. This can be really handy with long term use, you know, if your board meets multiple times a month, then pretty quickly you'll have a lot of tiles in here. And you might be looking for just a specific name or a date, something like that. So you'll be able to quickly look at that here, you know. For instance, if you know the item you're looking for is a special meeting or from a special meeting, you could go ahead and type that in here and it would help filter that pretty quickly for you. Same thing here with the date range. This is a great way to quickly add the dates that you need to find that agenda. In the top right here, you can actually search within the documents. So when I click that search icon, it went a little quick here. So I'll hover over that just for another second here. The search icon will open up our search results where you can start entering in whatever it is that you may want for um, search here. So if you want to look through your own notes, through items on an agenda, if you want to look through minutes, all of those will be available here in separate tabs. So if I went ahead and typed in Civic Plus here, I could select the date range if I wanted. So if I wanted to narrow it down even more, I could. But then once I hit search, it will pull up my results. And initially here, you'll see how many results were pulled up with this number at the top left. But we don't see that at the bottom here. That's because my result is actually within an item. This first tab is going to be any agenda with that name or with that term, any items, any notes that you have taken. Comments and discussion is what we call minutes in this platform. So if your result shows up in a minute document, it will show in this fourth one. And then if you have any bookmarks in the documents that we're about to look at, those will also show up here on the fifth tab. So switching over here to the item, I can then see exactly what this item is, what date it was, uh, or it was set, what meeting, the category that the item was, and even who created that item if I wanted to take a look. Clicking on the item would take me directly to it, but we're not going to get too far ahead of ourselves here because this probably looks like gibberish for you for now until we get into explaining it. So let's go back a step or two here into that main page that we were on. And talk about how you'll use this system and the different features available to you. So the board portal is intended to be used before, during and after a meeting for all of your notes, materials, references and so on. Before the meeting, once it's published, you will receive an email letting you know that the agenda is ready for your viewing in the board portal. That email will actually have a link directly in it that will take you to the agenda. So you can view it in the board portal from there. You don't have to go to a bookmark, log in and then find it. You can click on a link within that email and it'll take you directly to it. That's the nice thing about that. Um, but let's say now it's the day of the meeting, like we are here today. I don't want to go find that email and look through everything. So I might just log in via a bookmark, find the agenda that I want to work with and then take a look at it. To do that, we'll click on the tile that we would like to review today. So we'll use our work session agenda. And that's going to take us to our landing page for the agenda. So now we are looking at the work session agenda that we are working through today, but in a little more drawn out fashion than what you may be used to. If you would like to look at the PDF of the agenda, you can do that here on the left or look at the entire packet over here on the right. We'll do that here in just a second. This will allow you to look at the actual PDF of the document. So if you want to scroll through that way and look at something you're a little more used to, feel free to use those buttons. But there can be some benefit to using the drawn out version that we're looking at right here. Mainly, I can take individual notes and really dive into each item and review files separately outside of the packet. So if you would like to um, take a look at just a single document for one of these items or some notes for a single item, this is a great way to do it. If I want to review an item, I can go ahead and click on the one that I would like to take a look at. We're going to actually go ahead and select the second one here, just as an example, because it's going to have a little more details and info for us to use here. When I go ahead and click on that, it will take me directly to our item here. And I want to pause actually because I realized I haven't paused for questions just yet. So before we get into more info, are there any questions on what I've reviewed so far?
Anything?
You're covering all the questions I have.
Excellent. That's great to hear. Thank you. Um, so we are now reviewing an individual item on this agenda for the CCCF Community Grant Update. We see a few key pieces of information up here, who created the item, what department it was entered under. Doesn't look like we're using sponsors in the system right now, but if that is something that gets used in the future, you might see a name start to appear here. Below that, we can see the attachment for this item. So if you would like to look at the grant recommendations here for this first document, we can click on this. And we have two options to view that information. You can view the file, which will open it up in a PDF reader. So you can review it and take a look at the information. And you can also annotate the file. So these are two different options you have with these documents. View, as I mentioned, is only going to open up a PDF reader. It opens it up in a new tab as you see here. So I can go ahead and review the information. However, the other option annotate will not only let you take a look at that file, but it will also open up a toolkit that you can then use to take notes directly on this item. So if you're somebody who likes to take notes directly on the page, this is a great way to do it. Up top here in the left hand corner, I've got a few options that I can use to work with this document. Annotate in particular is the main one we really want to take a look at here. When I open that up, it's going to open up a list of options here that I can use. They're all icons and so you might have to click through them a few times to kind of figure out what you would like to use. But you know, let's say you want to highlight some text. This button or this icon right here next to the capital T is going to let me do that. So I can say, you know, one important piece here is this sentence right here. It'll go ahead and highlight that. And then it may be a little difficult to see right now, but in the bottom right of that highlight is a little square icon here that's appeared. And when I highlight over that, it'll actually let me add a comment if I want. So it's a great way to annotate documents if you'd like. Um, you know, I'm just going to put in some quick notes here, note one, for instance, and I can go ahead and run through this as I see fit. You can also just write some quick notes here in a text box if you would like. So um, we'll go ahead and write just some sample text here. Any number of options are available to you here, but these can be a little more useful on some other documents we'll look at today. Arrow annotations, for instance, can be really great for pointing out an important piece of information or connecting pieces of information. You can also strike through text. Maybe it's decided that, you know, they are going to change the number of applicants. You can go ahead and highlight that and it'll strike it through. And you can then take some more notes or whatever you may need to do. Any questions on the annotation feature right now?
I think it's just something we need to all play with a little bit.
Definitely. It is a trial by error thing. It's how I learned when I use this is why when I was first hired as well. So I get that. A few other features that you can do with this uh, annotation tool are this, are we do have the search feature right here. So if you are looking through a document and you'd like to find a specific piece of text, you can go ahead and type that in right up here. We'll use Rubrik. And it's going to search. And so it will start finding those results. The packet is going to be a better resource for this, for our search feature. This is just one page, but I'll show you some great use of this here in just a moment. Uh, but our search feature has some additional uh, options over here. So if you're looking for an exact word, you can use that, you can match case and a few other features here as well for search refinement. If you go through the document, take all the notes you want and you're happy with it, maybe it's a couple of days before the meeting. Right over here on the top right hand corner, we've got a few options with what we can do with these notes. I can download them. So if you'd like to print them out, keep them in front of you, you can download them. When you click download, it will bring up an option over here on the left hand side. It will allow you to include annotations. So if you do not select that, you'll just get the document without all the notes I've taken. However, if I select annotations, it will allow me to download the entirety of my document and notes all in one place.
I have a question about the annotations. Um, are these public or are they private?
That really depends on what your FOIA law states. Um, I would recommend, highly recommend you talk to your attorney to confirm this. However, as far as I understand in Colorado, these are considered work product notes. And I do not believe that those are um, requestable under Cora, but that is something that I would talk to your attorney about.
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Perfect. Um, so if you finish taking your notes, like we've done here, as I mentioned, you can download them. The other option here with the floppy disk is save and exit. Save and exit is going to bring us out of that window and back to the page we were just on. But if I select that annotate file option again for this file, it will open up and load all of my annotations for me. So you don't have to reload them or anything like that. They'll open up when you open the document again. All right. So you can review the, these all one by one. And there's also an additional note you'll hear. You can take them directly on the document, or maybe you just want to take some quick notes here such as annotations or we can say on the first attachment, um, and then maybe just some more sample sentences here, just to see how this looks when it's filled out. There are a few different formatting options here. So if you do have any specific emphasis or notes that you would like to do, please feel free to use these options up here. Um, and a few other formatting here for headings and ties as well. Most of the time I see board members just put some quick notes in here, some quick thoughts after reviewing things or anything like that. So once you get to the meeting and it's time to vote, you can quickly review these items one by one and see what you were thinking, you know, a few days ago when you first reviewed it. So really great way to do that. These notes auto save, unlike the annotations where we had to hit the save and exit, these notes will save automatically. That will also pop up right here. So the moment I type in more text and pause, it will pop up again, letting me know that I don't have to worry about it. To get into a good flow here, if you're going item by item, all the way at the bottom of the page here below that text box is a next and previous item button. So if I wanted to keep rolling through my agenda, I can hit next item. And here we are onto item number three. I can now take a look at my attachment again. Annotate, write notes, whatever I need here, and then continue to move on. Any questions about this general process right now?
Yeah. Do you have any preference settings where we could automatically save the annotations? Because what would be the point to take them if we can't save them automatically?
Um, you know, that is a good question and I am excited to actually find out that answer for you. I recently made a recommendation to upgrade our PDF viewer and annotation tool from one that was about 10 years old and they did that just this week. So we actually have quite a few new features that we're still figuring out how they all work. So um, I will circle back on that and make sure that you have that information.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions right now? Okay. So one other nice feature on this drawn out version that you can do here is favorite an item in the top right here. So if this is an important item for you and you want to make sure that you note that for your own note, I can go ahead and mark this star in the top right. And what that'll do is if I go back to my agenda details, which will take me back to the full agenda layout, I'll be able to see at a glance which items I've marked as important to me. So whatever this mark may be for you, it's a good way to just kind of quickly see that at a glance. So you can go in and review that specific item if needed. Sections can also have notes taken on them as well. We cannot click on the section such as discussion item or adjournment. However, over on the left hand side of those, if you click the three dots, it will open up the ability to do so. So I can hit review and it will then take me in that note section, just like we were using on that item. That is probably the recommended way to take notes on items. However, I do realize that a lot of folks love to have just a single document. They want to roll through the entire packet and go item by item that way instead of page by page. And so if that's something that's more your speed, the agenda and packet icons up here are going to allow you to do the same thing we were just doing with attachments, but for the entire file. So I can view the packet right here and take a look at everything in a PDF viewer, or once again, I can annotate that document and it will pull it up in full 15 pages if we look up here. So I can go ahead and scroll through and view the packet this way instead. You'll still have the annotation options available to you up here. So you can still take all the notes that you want, write anything that you need. What I do know, what I'll see some folks do actually of going back up to the agenda here is some board members like to just track the status of items as they go themselves. So we've got a little stamp tool here and go ahead and switch this to green. And I've seen people just go ahead and put these little notes here next to each item as the votes roll out. So a few other options while there. This is where our search can also come in handy here. Let's scroll down here to this table here, for instance. Um, let's say you're trying to find a specific item in this and I've got glasses as you see, so I don't, I don't see things very well and search through documents like this very well. So instead I can go over here to our search option and go ahead and type in, um, we'll go ahead with nonprofit. That's pretty, pretty common in here. So we'll see what we can get here. And so you'll see that the system pulls in all search results over here on the left hand side for the text that you're looking for. I did some testing just before our training today because as I said, we just did some upgrades to this and noticed a few other really cool features with this upgraded viewer. I can even search within images and it will find those, those pieces of text that match within the images in this packet. So a really great way to look for any single piece of information that someone told you is in that packet, but you just can't find it. Just like with our documents for now, until I can find out that information, please remember to hit that save and close on your annotations, just so you don't lose anything for now. But the board portal, while it does have quite a few features, it is pretty intuitive. Once you start getting in there and doing some testing yourself. We've gone over the basic use. I do want to show you minutes here in just a second. But before we do and transition into a new feature, do you have any questions on viewing agendas, taking a look through attachments, notes, anything like that right now?
Yeah. Does the packet include the minutes uh, and the agenda like we're used to?
Yes, yep. The packet will include all of the information that is on the agenda. So it will always start with the agenda like we see here. And if you have a minutes item in there, then any attachment will also show there. To show you something maybe a little closer to what you're used to, let's actually look at the first agenda that we were, or that we did in a previous training here, this agenda manager training. This is going to have a little more close to what your regular meeting agenda layout is. And so if you have something like minutes, you will have that available here with the minutes document viewable. It's also in the packet if you were looking at that.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I think we're good on that.
All right, excellent. So lastly, then really, I just want to show you our minutes doc, or our minutes tab down here. Minutes will show very similar to this first page where we see our agenda, but it's only going to show you meetings that have their minutes published. I went ahead and published the test minutes that we were using for this agenda manager training. So we could take a look at this here today. When you select that agenda, it's going to take you again to that layout that we were looking at earlier. The difference is when I click in on one of these items such as approve minutes, it's going to take me to a different layout here where I don't see the attachments, but instead I can see the motions and votes. So if there were any votes on this item, I could see that here. And then any recorded minutes are going to show here in this box. So this particular item, just for this test, did not have any minutes. But just like we did with our agenda, I can go ahead and go to the next item quickly here instead of going back and forth. And we might see some more information now. So this item did have a test vote or two test votes actually run on it as you can see here. The first one is going to be a motion to amend. So this was the first motion that happened on this item. And here were our votes. These were all test votes. So I know you see your names and you didn't do any of that. It was just for demonstration purposes. And then our second one here.
It looks like we have a contrarian in our midst.
Um, the second vote, as you can see, is for our approval of the item. We can see who initiated and seconded each of these votes. And then down below, any minutes for that item that have been entered by your clerk staff, that is going to show here for you to view. Um, so I just wanted to make sure you saw this as well, since I, I think this is, this can be a really great post meeting review of things. If you'd like to go through, this information will show for you before it is published to the public, as long as they have solidified all of that information.
Yeah, Chrissy, do you have anything you wanted to? No, okay.
All right. So that pretty much covers it here today. Lastly, I did mention that notes tab at the beginning of today's training. When I click on notes now, remember it was blank initially when we clicked on it earlier. When I click on it now, it's going to pop up the 331 agenda that we took notes on. So the other one does not show up here because I didn't take any notes on it. But if I click on this 331, it will show me the text note that I have taken on this agenda. So it won't tell you what you've annotated, which is why I do recommend putting some kind of note in there quickly on the text. But this can be nice because this just lets me know what have I, what work have I already done? You know, if I'm taking notes on each item or items that are important to me, this is going to list all of those out. I can quickly go to that item by clicking on the name. Or if you are someone who takes substantial text notes and you write longer notes in that discussion box that we were looking at earlier, I can even print these notes if you want to keep them all in one place. It'll put them all in one kind of ordered table here. They, I use some weird formatting. That's why this is very large. But if you had some larger uh, text in there, some paragraphs and so on, this is a great way to just quickly review those as well. Since these are not uh, under, are qualified under Cora, you wouldn't have to worry about it. But this is just one way that we do pull notes when it's requested of us for FOIA. All right. That covers it for today's training. Any final questions I can answer before I sign off here?
Nice job.
Thank you very much.
All right, excellent. Thank you. And I hope you enjoy using the board portal.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great day.
Next up, um, we have the JP County Community Foundation Community Grant Update. And at the risk of sounding like a broken record, uh, you know, I remember coming onto council um, almost eight years ago. And we were trying to do this ourselves and uh, there was no science. And I'm really, really appreciative to have a community partner that really knows this. And I'm grateful to council member Pappen for it, for volunteering again. For anyone sitting up here who hasn't had an opportunity to work on this, it's a great way to really get to know all the nonprofits we have here in this community. And you have the entire next year to think about whether or not you have the time for it. So thanks for being here and thanks for all the good work you did.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, thank you um, for getting us on the agenda so quickly. So I'm Anna Hendricks. So I'm the program director with the Community Foundation and we just had our final committee review um, session on Friday. So it was a really quick turnaround, um, but I think it's really great because that just allows us the opportunity to get funds out the door as quickly as possible to nonprofits. So I gave a little bit of an overview. So hopefully everybody had a chance um, to review a little bit about this process, which by and large is pretty on par with what we've seen for the last several years in terms of number of applications. There's always more asked and there is funds available is very common. So a lot of whittling down that has to be done. You know, one of the things about, I think, this grant process in particular, um, was that we had kind of fewer organizations that weren't recommended for funding where we had a lot more last year. We also had an applicant, uh, the BV uh, middle school actually pulled their application because they got successful funding from elsewhere, which was like the best news I could get because they still got their project done and it opened up more funds um, elsewhere. You know, and one thing I always like to note with anybody who isn't funded through this process, uh, we always make a personal call on the follow up and we offer to sit down and provide feedback with them. So like a no is never the end of the line. It's really an opportunity. We share the scoring that came from the rubric, maybe different, um, you know, comments from the grant reviewers that can really help strengthen their application. And there are several organizations that were funded this year that were actually denied last year in this process that now got their application. Like they really lifted up their application. Now they're getting funding this year. So I, I just feel like that's a big win. And then I can talk maybe just an overview, you know, as you said, with the process and kind of how we go through all of that. So there's the initial uh, screening by staff. So we just are checking for eligibility, making sure anybody who is moving forward to the grant review committee is a 501(c)(3) or they, you know, they basically have all of their kind of ducks in a row, if you will. And so they're an eligible entity to be considered for funding. Then we do the initial scoring by the grant review committee, um, where they're looking at the rubric, they're making notes, and then they're coming up with different questions of like, what are maybe the missing pieces? Because we really want to be looking at impactful programs in our uh, community, maybe not necessarily the best grant writers. You know, we've got well established organizations that have great grant writers, they're really impactful programs. But we don't want to miss some really impactful programs uh, that maybe just didn't know how to answer that question. And so that's what, you know, when the, under the interviews and the follow up questions, it's an opportunity for the grant review committee to just gather any of those missing bits. And sometimes that'll help to elevate their score a little bit and kind of persuade people one way or another, or maybe it keeps the score the same. And so, you know, lined out here in the final recommendations is just that final score is a um, is the average of, you know, several different metrics that we take, um, and kind of where they landed. And then we take that information and, and kind of workshop it. This is the final iteration of many, many spreadsheets as Lisa can attest to. And so these are the final recommendations. And so these are the final recommendations for the Spring Grant Review Process. And open to any questions, or if there's any part of the process you'd like me to elaborate on a little bit more, I'm happy to.
Questions?
Well, then I'll just say thank you. And it took me a moment to recognize you because when you only see people on the computer and then you see them live, it's like, oh, that's Anna.
Yeah.
Anna, do you want to talk about who you're making this recommendation to? It's not City Council, right? It's to the Foundation Board. You'll be taking the recommendation for funding to the Community Foundation Board?
Yeah, so we, yeah. Yeah, so the Grant Review Committee consists of both the City of Salida representative, BV trustees, community members, and then the BV Board, or sorry, the Chaffee County Community Foundation Board or Community Empowerment Committee, which is subcommittee underneath the Board. And so we take these recommendations to both the City Council and trustees, and then the final vote goes to the Chaffee County Community Foundation Board for approval. And then, and then we make the awards to the nonprofits.
Hi, Anna, it's good to see you.
You too.
I was curious, last year when we did this, did we separate out BV residents and Salida residents?
So that's actually a really good question. We did, but the Grant Review Committee doesn't necessarily, it's in all the applications, but we, it's really the backend work that we do. So when people apply, this helps us to see, okay, there's certain funding from the, from BV, there's certain funding from Salida, and that percentage helps us to pull the funds from the organizations relative to the amount of services they're providing within those. So it was there, and it was in the final recommendation to the Board as well as the presentations. But the Grant Review Committee doesn't necessarily take this information and do anything with it. Oh, we should fund more in BV, or we should fund more in Salida. We kind of take that and we just do the backend work of what pot of funds it comes out of.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
The only other thing I would mention, just a little bit of a history lesson for anyone listening is, seven, eight years ago, when we came in, or many of us came into council, there was very limited amounts of money being allocated to our nonprofits. And the council at the time made the commitment to take 1% of general fund revenues because we recognized how important all these nonprofits are. I mean, they truly are community partners, and if they're successful, we as a community are successful. And it's a really good program, and as I mentioned before, it's great to have it administered in such a thoughtful and scientific way, so thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, and I'll just, we had such a good Grant Review Committee this time. We were just like, can we keep you, we had a really great combination of new review committee members. I mean, it really is, it shows the value of that process of the community review. They were thoughtful in all of their responses, they're very thoughtful in their follow-up questions. And I think it helps the nonprofit community feel really seen and lifted up by the community as well. I get a lot of gratitude. We hear a lot of gratitude for these funds, but also just kind of the direct connection and support that comes out of this process as well, so, yeah.
Just a quick question for this grant cycle, what was the contribution that the city provided?
The city is at $90,816.
Okay, thank you.
I think it's encouraging that entities that failed to receive funding last year came back and, I don't know. How many, how many entities fit that?
I know of at least three offhand, and there might be more. I didn't do the exact count. There were a couple that we sat down with. And we also, so we offer that one-on-one support. We're actually coming up on the Community Foundation, I'll put in a plug for our Community Summit. It will be the fourth year that we've hosted it. And so it's an opportunity for nonprofit leaders and community members, board members, to get support. And so it's actually grown into a two-day event. We have an entire day that's just grant workshopping because it's a common, like, help us. We know we need funds, like, and getting that support, you know, there's a fee to attend, but we also raise a lot of funds, so there's scholarships available for anybody who wants to attend. And we found that grant writing just continually comes up, and people are really appreciative of, you know, somebody who can sit down with them one-on-one and really offer that feedback, so.
Really encouraging, thank you.
Well, and I'll add to that, that I saw improvement in some of the entities that applied. Their grants were really highly polished over what I saw years ago. So I really see that process at, at work.
Yeah.
April 28th and 29th is the Community Summit, right?
29th and 30th.
29th and 30th, yes.
29th and 30th.
Yes, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Anna. Appreciate it.
Okay, next up, the Tenderfoot Mountain discussion.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So there are two items associated with Tenderfoot Mountain that we would like to get sta, we're staff, you're council. We'd like to get council's direction on.
Thank you for that clarification.
You know, some days I just have to say it out loud. So some of this background you all have already received. So there, there are two, there are two topics. One is Christmas Mountain, and the other is the opening of Spiral Drive this summer. So we'll start with Christmas Mountain. As you all are aware, we have had the, we've had a really great volunteer take care of the Christmas tree, gather community support, get funding, get everybody up the mountain to take care of the Christmas tree. And he decided to retire from his volunteer services. And while we don't blame him for that, now we're like, oh, now what do we do? So Diesel Post is in the audience, and he has been working with his staff to determine kind of what the next steps are. So we have a couple options here that we feel are valid, that we can move forward with. You know, some of this will require funding, which we'll be talking about in not-too-distant future as we move into 2026. But there are some things that probably need to happen prior to the end of the year, or if things aren't going to, if things are going to remain status quo, kind of what the expectation should be for the community and how the city is trying to ensure that Christmas Mountain stays Christmas Mountain and is lit. So we can all just party around Christmas Mountain. Okay, so Diesel is going to take it from here.
Sure. So I kind of left last time when I brought this to you guys with a, I mean, for lack of a better term, like, let's kick this can down the road a little bit and see what happens. And Christmas time is probably a bad time to talk about Christmas Mountain. Everybody's coming out of the woodwork, oh my God, what's going to happen? How are we going to make sure that we have Christmas Mountain moving forward? And I'm sure each and every one of you had someone say something to you, and they probably said something along the lines of, if nothing else, I'll go up there and I'll take care of it. And that's exactly what we don't want to have happen. We can't really, our previous group, I don't know, you may recall, there was a picture in the paper where there were people up there that probably shouldn't have been up there. Grandmothers with their grandchildren doing kind of a Christmas light roundup. And it got us very nervous about how the volunteers were being managed and some things like that. Like, they were all there, it just was a little bit of a free-for-all. So we were, you know, we tried to get the waivers signed, the waivers weren't always signed. So our strategy was first, how much would it cost? And I brought this to you last time, probably around $15,000 to have it professionally done. That would be with a person who manages the lights, is an electrician, a low-voltage electrician, can, can kind of handle, if the light go, if the lights go out, they'll be the ones who go up there and take care of it. And they set them up and they take them down. We think, and what we're going to try to pilot this year, is that if we get like one or two really quality volunteer leaders that we train, not as city staff, but that are really, they're engaged, they're willing to listen, they understand the concept of waivers and just kind of this newer era that the city is entering into, that though, they can lead a volunteer force when the time comes. Because a lot of it is just managing and setting things up and getting the buckets of lights ready and getting the, getting the ornaments ready to get picked up and dropped off. And so we already have, we have two people who have already gone up and done an evaluation with staff, have been kind of introduced to the topic. While up there, this is where we got that data. I know it's always kind of fun to, to do the details. Like, we have 99 trashcans in town that have to be cleaned or emptied every day. Well, there are 2,380 green bulbs that make up the tree, so whatever.
And if one goes out.
So take a snap, a picture of this, and you can wow your friends and neighbors with the, with the lights up there. But, you know, we're looking at about a total of 100-person hours total to set it up, and then 100-person hours to break it down. So we want to just have a little bit more control over who's going up there, when, make sure everybody signs the waivers, make sure that the volunteers, the volunteer leaders can lead and kind of control the situation. So that's what we're going to pilot this year. You can see spring, I mean, the bulbs stay up there until a few weeks anyway, every year. We're not really, we don't go up in the, or Jerry did not go up in the winter and take the ornaments down. He waited until the spring, and then they're down all summer, and then they'll go up again in the fall. And, you know, we could leave them up there selectively. Some of it, it starts to get, you start to really see it in the summertime. But it also fades the bulbs pretty bad. So I think the last time they left it up, the bulbs only lasted like three years before they had to get new bulbs. So then we think we'll just monitor over the winter and see how much time it, it takes. We're, we're committed to running up there if a breaker bursts or blows and, or bulbs out or, you know, if, if an animal, you know, trampuses through an ornament or whatever it is, well, we're committed to going up there and kind of tracking how much time that takes. But it is just another, another ask for staff. So that's the strategy for now. Questions?
Questions?
I guess my concern would be not, like, I don't, I don't want to limit who can volunteer just because maybe they're part of the elderly population or the younger kids. This grandmother could be taking her granddaughter, who, and she's been doing it since she was a kid. I see, I understand what you're saying, but I just don't want there to be like any, like age limit, I guess.
And I don't think we're looking at that. It's more that they understand the risks that are involved with going up there between-
You can see every year with the hill climb.
Yeah, I mean, the, it is an unstable hillside that has, depending on the time of year, snakes and other, you know, items up there. There are electric boxes that, you know, shouldn't be messed with. So I don't think it's about limiting who's going up there. It's about the City of Salida knowing who's going up there, making sure that they have a waiver, that they're signed, that they understand what the, honestly, what the risks are, and that we have that information. So I, I don't think we want to exclude, we, we don't want to exclude anyone. We want to make sure that they understand the risks and that we are in a position to, like, control the situation so that no one gets hurt working on something that's a City of Salida project.
And I think these volunteer leaders will be able to, there are so many different jobs from, from sorting bulbs into all the reds in this bucket, and, you know, there's, there's plenty to do. It just, it, it was, we were very far away from the management previously, and we just want to get a lot closer. You know, in the last presentation that we had on this, we're looking at about, from what, our estimates are about $150,000 to have the concrete and the electrical fixed up there. And so that is something that I'll continue to kind of throw out there, like I do with bathrooms or like a boat ramp at Marvin Park. Like, eventually, like, we're gonna have to address this. And whether it's looking towards the future at other funding mechanisms or saying no to something so that we can say yes to kind of not-so-pretty, like glamorous projects, like fixing, you know, our dilapidated electrical system up there right now. So.
Although Director Post, wouldn't that benefit some of our vendors that are up on S-Mountain too?
You know, and I think they're taking care of themselves.
They are?
Yeah.
So this is mostly just infrastructure for Christmas Mountain?
It really is.
Okay, good to know.
They, they know what they, they need, and they've made sure to write that into their leases and all of that. So unfortunately, our, that, yes, Christmas Mountain is not a part of that infrastructure.
But would those improvements benefit those vendors too?
Yes, the concrete certainly.
Right.
The concrete steps for sure. The concrete quote also includes the S itself, the steps up to the house and the house. So that would benefit them and their access, but.
So those capital improvements could be, you know, spread across, well, we do have some revenue sources to help offset them.
So we've gone, we just went through the lease negotiations with Visionary Broadband. And to the extent that was feasible, we included maintenance costs in that lease agreement. It's pretty minimal, honestly, what would benefit them, that they were willing to, you know, contribute to. And the same will be for Hilltop or Verizon.
I think it's not only a great tradition, I think it also helps to contribute to our sales tax in the community, drawing people with Christmas Mountain. I think our retailers do appreciate it too, so.
Yes, it's a pain in the side a little bit as it starts getting going. And then every single year when it happens, it's like, how can you, how can you not? So like, then there's the, the piece in the, in the news and the video on YouTube, and like, it's just, it's so great. There's just, you know, you kind of, I get nervous and I get anxious about it. And then by when it's all said and done, it's like, oh my God, this is amazing. So we do recognize that, and there will be at some point a very specific call for volunteers. So just say that to constituents when they ask, you know, as the weather changes back. You know, yeah, just keep your eyes open and we'll, we'll do a specific call for volunteers, sign the waiver, get on the list, and the, these leaders will reach out to you.
And I wondered, I haven't really given a lot of thought, it just sort of popped up. But this is a really iconic feature of our community, much like Fibark is. And I think about how, what's happened with Fibark with this big, well-resourced volunteer board. I just wonder if there's a way to sort of position this as maybe a scaled-down version, but something similar? Because we're going to need a lot of citizen volunteers and help out there. And if we can position it or present it in a certain way, it might help us get the manpower, the person power we need to really do justice to it.
Yeah, I'll be very curious. We need hands, not necessarily board members, you know? And I failed to mention, we have reached out to SPOT to see if this could be like a subcommittee under SPOT. They, they occasionally take on various projects, like, it's not just trails. Salida Parks Open Space and Trails, and this would very much be in their purview. We're trying to work out specifically, like, they want to be very careful about their liability. And so, but we have an MOU with them, that their volunteers who do work on our property are covered by our insurance. And so if they were just SPOT, if they felt a SPOT waiver, it would, the trickle, trickle-down waiver kind of idea, that we also have our own, but we think that this would help SPOT a lot. Kind of bring attention, bring volunteers to that organization.
Thanks.
Diesel, when, when people ask us, what are we going to say? You're going to go to the city website to sign up for that opportunity? You're going to go to the Parks and Rec?
You know, we would, we will probably be blasting QR codes on social media with links to either a sub-page on the city website or a page on the SPOT website, depending on who ends up kind of doing the management. Right now, the city's waiver is available online on the city website. So I send a lot of people who want to do work, just, hey, go to the city website, go to Get Involved, and go to, hit Get Involved, and there's a big link that says City Waiver. And we have an account with DocuSign, so they click on that, fill out their email address. They get an email that says, please complete this waiver. And we get individualized digital waivers through DocuSign for everybody who does that. So at some point, if they end up using, well, we want them to use the city's waiver, they will do that. But how they get there, it'll probably be a variety of calls to action, from flyers to Instagram.
And you'll keep us in the loop as that information develops?
Yeah, sure.
So I spoke with Jerry McCabe, who has volunteered for years and helped set up the whole project, pretty much to make it as simple as possible. From what he was saying, and he has a list of the people that worked with him on this, and I just want to make sure you guys are reaching out. You know, when I spoke with him, he said, I don't want the city to have to spend any more money to- You know, when I spoke with him, he said, I don't want the city to have to spend any more money to reinvent the wheel. Because they have it dialed in. I mean, every year it's gorgeous, it's up there. They, they do their minimal hours, you know, because they have a process. You know, are we reaching out to use some of what he already has to help us save and volunteer and money in all of those things?
Yeah, and I'm surprised he didn't mention that to you. We, we work, I mean, we worked in parallel with him for probably the last three years. We're right there the whole time. We are learning everything from him. That's why I feel like he felt like he could retire. He was, he was gonna retire and then he wasn't and then we just, we just stayed with him. And he, I mean, we gave him, the city said, go to, well, literally, go to ACE, put it on the, here's your name. He got signed up as a purchaser. And so he could get the GFIs that he needed. And, I mean, we worked very closely with him during the season. I mean, there's not, probably every other day he is talking to Nate or Zach.
He said he reached out, but he didn't, he just said he wanted to make sure the city didn't reinvent what he felt like he had dialed in for years. And he's, and so I'm sure you have his.
Yeah, oh, yeah, I have, I can show you the text.
I figure you do. Yeah, he dropped this off.
Yes.
He came a couple of weeks ago and said, hi, I'm Jerry, I just wanted to say hi, so.
Yeah, no, he did amazing work and we just want to continue it with a little bit of, little bit more oversight.
Perfect, thank you.
I was just gonna say, I think it's an excellent idea to have a nonprofit partner for this because we've heard about, you know, how this is in the road, we're sort of like driven by the people. And so there might come a time when we want to have a fundraiser for like the electrical situation. And SPOT is an excellent partner for that kind of thing too. And I think will help build kind of awareness for the need as well. And might be able to get, you know, grant funds targeted for nonprofit work too. Maybe like a Friends of S Mountain group would be really hand, like a handy umbrella to put it under.
Yeah, we have, we have, we had a group that went up and did a dog poo cleanup that we kept trying to track down who the heck is doing this because nobody signed waivers. It's just like on in social media posts and we're like, wait, what's going on? Like, can we at least get some people to sign some waivers? But, yeah, there's, they would come out in droves for a variety of reasons, from the road to the S, to the heart, to the tree, to the dog poop.
And the lighting of the tree has been such a great fundraiser for other causes to, or kind of at the center of fundraising efforts for other causes like Jane's Place, things like that throughout the years. So maybe we could actually use the lighting of the tree as a centerpiece for updating the electrical. And I know some people are gonna say that the city shouldn't need to have a fundraiser or whatever, but I just would ask people to look at the history of how these things came to be and they were really driven by people, by the people, not driven by the city and our budget, so.
And I would imagine a lot of people would find the idea of a fundraiser more palatable than a property tax.
There's that.
Well, fundraiser is for that rec center too then.
We'll have a bake sale.
Diesel, do you have a date yet for the taking down?
No.
No, okay.
No.
But I've really looked in, like, I guess, sponsorship packages for the lighting of, like, S Mountain, the tree to get, you know, local businesses, as they, you know, maybe put some on the radio, say, you know, this week funded by, you know, one of the businesses in town, they get something on the radio and if they give us some money, four or five businesses a year or however many it takes, like.
Yeah, we can certainly look into that.
Fibark is doing, you know, they have to come out and find sponsorships and they have, you know, they, yes, they put them on the radio.
I think the general consensus right now, and this is definitely a council conversation maybe moving forward, but right now, we're, we are operating in the, it is the heart, the S and the Christmas tree and that is it. So, I'm sorry, you bring up sponsorships and the obvious, my brain goes to, now we're gonna have, you know, whatever, a Walmart logo up there. So like, and that's where my mind goes to, but it certainly doesn't have to be that way. And I think that right now, so that everyone knows, the answer to anyone who wants to do anything else up there that is not the heart, the S or the tree is no. Ribbons, awareness campaigns, Monarch Mountain, like, right now, the answer is no. So that is, so that you know that's the way that we're operating. But, yeah, you can certainly sponsor and be called out in the, on the radio and online and.
Send you the electric bill. I like it. Great. Any other questions about the tree? All right, so we will keep you updated. No one will not know that we're looking for volunteers. All right, so the second part of the Tenderfoot Mountain discussion is Spiral Drive. A few months ago, the council asked us to bring forward information on Tenderfoot Mountain and Spiral Drive and opening the road up for the summer. We gave you all a bunch of information, there are lots of pictures attached to this memo as well. We are asking for you all to give us direction on what you would like to see. We've provided information about, you know, the time for city staff to go up there, kind of the expectation that we have of making sure that the, the road is safe for vehicles to travel on. There hasn't been graffiti up at the Little White House for a couple of years now. And I've asked staff to take pictures before, if the council's direction is to open the road to take pictures of some of the, oh, what the road looks like, what the little house looks like, you know, how much, if there's any time we spend the summer, kind of cleaning up things. So, you know, I think now is your, now is, we're asking for your all, your direction to us. And, you know, we're, we're just asking that if the, if the road is to be open, we're recommending opening it on Friday morning, leaving it open for the weekend and closing it on Monday morning then, to kind of limit staff needing to go up, check to see if anybody's up there, then come back down. But that's, that's our recommendation, but obviously interested in your thoughts and questions and the direction that you would like us to take.
I have a sense that we're, this is not gonna be, you're not gonna be met with silence here.
No, and I'm ready.
Yes, so who would like to begin?
I'll start. You know, I like the proposed schedule. I also wonder if we could put some kind of blockage to those stairs because those don't look like something anybody should be walking on.
Yes, and that's what our, the broadband providers and Verizon use to get up to the tower. So I agree that they are used by the vendors up there.
They need a rocket pack.
Yes.
Yeah, so I guess just to like establish what, like, the, like, getting a better understanding of like the liability just when it comes to the, you know, exposed rebar, like what is, how much of that, how much of like an injury up there as a result of any of these elements fall on the city?
So the, the, the shorter answer is the city can be sued for anything at any time and we would engage with SIRS, our insurance provider, to provide a defense for us. The, when I asked SIRS last year what their take was on us opening the road, they said it's whatever we're comfortable with and getting, you know, whatever that liability looks like to us. So I can't answer that question specifically, but it, you know, it's, it's not the liability for opening it and having someone, now we're just talking vehicles, right? Because at this point, if you're walking up there, if you're riding your bike up there, you could be harmed if, you know, something bad happened anyhow, so.
Well, even speaking to the concept of like sectioning off the, the thing that could be an element that could be dangerous that's falling apart, like the stairs, like.
Right, and yet now people need access to it.
How much is that is like, you know, for liability falling, like, should I be losing sleep at night? And if not, then I won't.
I mean, I, I don't know that I can answer the question of how comfortable this council is with, with the liability issue. Yes, you can, we, we could get sued. That, I mean.
I mean, yeah.
Yes. I don't know, I, I mean, we can get sued for somebody stepping off of a curb wrong as well. So, I mean, I just, I, yeah.
Wiping out in the skate park or having.
Yeah, I just, I don't, I don't know how to, if you sleep well at night, don't let this discussion change that.
That's loud.
Right, I just, I'm sorry, council member, I just, like, can't. There, we have certain staff members who are okay with that liability, right? Like, our police department have a very litigious job, right? They're gonna get sued for things. Diesel, not so much. He does not like the idea of somebody coming back and suing the city. I'm somewhere in the middle, like, things happen and we can do our best to negate some of that. And we also make decisions that the community, or we feel is best for the community, whichever way we go, so.
Yeah, I'm, you know, I'm aware. I mean, we have, we have a surf wave, you know, that.
It's your risk appetite. SIRS keeps telling us. I apparently have very little risk appetite because maybe of, yeah, surf waves and skate parks and, and, but we also are covered under the attractive nuisance of a playground. I mean, that is what it is. So, yeah, we, and honestly, we have come to you and explained exactly what we feel the issues are. And so much so that it's not our call, it's the collective's call at this point. You know, we, at the time, felt like it was very straightforward and we, as staff collectively, closed it and said, no. Like, not, not now. And we are being asked to explore opening it again, presented, you know, the facts as best we can. The reality is, is you will see headlights up there in the middle of the night. That could be really disturbing. So some people, like me, I go, I'd be nervous Nellie kind of thing, but, but to some people, it's pretty cool.
Sleep with an eye shade.
Yeah, no, I, yeah. Yeah, I wouldn't, so, yeah, I think it really does come down to what is this council's risk appetite? And, you know, we even said, then don't sign it. Sign it, don't sign it, like, what this, you know, we just presented to you the reality of the state of the electricity and the concrete and where's the hundred and fifty thousand to fix it all? Like, it's being spent somewhere else, like, so.
Yep.
Advise, direct.
So I have a couple of questions about the risk and such. Right now, there's already access up there to hikers. There's already access up there to bikers and they park their bikes and they walk up those stairs and they have complete access to anything that's up there. So I like the proposal of opening it for people who are not hiking or who are not biking or who are not able to. They can still have the same access if they choose to get out of their car and walk up to the top for a second. It's the same risk as the hiker that just went up there or the Fibark run. You know, we, I know they sign waivers, but they're, they're going up there. And so it's the same, same, similar risk of what, on the same roads. And the, limiting access to one group who cannot access it with hiking or biking is taking away an ability for one group and not the others. You know, I know the road is slightly, needs some, needs some work on it. And then we have to think, okay, who pays for that? Well, you know, other groups will hopefully jump in. We open this up, they have access to it three days a week, then we lock it. Would that be you, your department locking?
We, we, it will get locked, so between public works and parks.
And that's what you had, had done previous?
Yeah, we, after some brief research, the two people who unlocked it in the morning have retired. So they were parks employees. But every evening, the police would go up, because they have to drive all the way to the top and make sure nobody's up there and then come down and lock the gate.
And we're not suggesting that anymore?
Not on a daily basis, that would happen, someone would have to do that on Monday.
And we'll determine who that is based on workload?
Yeah.
Okay, well, that, that's all for the moment, thank you.
Thanks.
I'm fine with the three-day opening in the summertime, it seems like a, a good compromise. I agree, the concrete is in really bad shape, like, so something will have to be done about that. But in interest of expanding our Friends of S Mountain group, that's gonna have the fun, the bake sale fundraiser to replace what we, we call it the witch's house. That's what my kids called it.
Good witcher battles.
To fix that, like, in the interest of expanding the public that has access to it, I think that we've got to give those drivers that temporary access to it.
The other thing I would say, you know, you talked about the graffiti and I recognize that we might see that, but similar to what we're doing with the lights and all, I would issue a challenge to this user group. The sense I get from people I've spoken to, there'd be people who'd be willing, if it's a couple times a year going up and cleaning that off, it would be, it'd be a good community event and a way for people to, to give back for something that's really important to them.
Exactly, similar to what Councilwoman Nakarado said. Once you get these groups in, you can advertise for S Mountain, you can advertise, you know, Christmas Mountain, you can advertise for, let's fix the house at the top. So hopefully, everybody within a group who has, is using or looking at it will help contribute.
Or we could preemptively get some artists to just graffiti the heck out of it in a cool-looking way.
It is, that is a strategy. I mean, it's, research has shown that something, something that is painted and adorned is not graffitied. It's less, it's graffitied less, I should say. With that as a strategy, we're looking at at the old skate park. But, yeah, if you've been up there before, it can be very offensive and shocking.
It's not nice for the witch's house.
No, and staff used to go up about twice a year. It would get to a point where it needed to be painted. And we have had volun, I think most recently, it was painted by a volunteer. I also think we may have had someone in trouble with the law up there to paint it once.
I was about to say, like, community service?
So there are tons of options and, yes.
And Memorial Day through Labor Day, is that the timeframe that you all looking at?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to say, I really appreciate staff finding a way to compromise. Just seconding what Councilmember Nakarado said. Because we were kind of split of like, should we open, it should be closed? And this is a really great compromise and I know that, I'm sure we all appreciate it because it makes it, it makes it the decision easier for us because it's something that can please both parties in a way. And I know our constituents appreciate it. I got a phone call from Jim Wilson. He really appreciated seeing that there was the compromise of it being just on the weekends. He's happy to take up his grandkids up there and everything. And he wanted to also tell us that we now have a feather in our cap for listening to the people and giving them what they want.
Which is really, really important.
Yes, not many feathers to put in that cap.
Well, there's, I mean, there's so much distrust of government these days and, yeah, so people come in a lot of times and they have this belief, oh, they're not gonna listen to us. And I think this is an example of taking in community feedback and recognizing their people on both sides of the issue and crafting something that maybe doesn't give everyone everything they want, but it gives people enough that they feel like they were heard, so.
And to be fair, I'm standing up here, but it was probably an hour of, of director time, all, all, at a director's meeting to kind of hash all this out, so.
Good work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All directors, all staff.
Thank you, Diesel. Don't go too far. All right.
Want to tether them to the?
Continuing on, should it stay or should it go? We're moving on to F Street, summer, summertime on F Street. So, as you all have either heard or seen, F Street is getting torn up. We are all very excited for what the end result is going to be. And yes, it is a painful process to go through any sort of construction and particularly in downtowns. And we understand, we sympathize, and we are asking that the community help us look at the, the big picture here. So with that being said, we wanted to bring to the council an update. So now that the contractor has started working on things, we'll have, we have a. So now that the contractor has started working on things, we'll have, we have a bit more of an updated, um, kind of schedule of work. There are also um some decision point, decisions that need to be made, um, that I think, I think staff felt had been made, but now maybe there's some questions. So we're hoping that this um work session, we will get kind of the final direction from council on what F Street will look like for the summer of twenty twenty-five. Um, because our businesses are planning, they have already been planning for it. So we are hoping to kind of solidify that this evening. Um, we have a fabulous presentation with a lot of strobing lights and you're gonna love it, Bill put it together.
That was gonna be happening on F Street.
So, with, this is a, this is a, a team effort. Feel free to stop us at any time, because there are, we're gonna give you a bunch of information and you'll see in the work session memo that there are some questions that we need um responses from you all. And I'm gonna take notes and make sure that I write it down as we go through the questions that we have. So David is going to start with the construction update.
I am prone to seizures.
Good to know, we won't turn the lights off and I think that that will be, I think it'll be all right then.
You don't wanna see that.
We don't.
Did you turn it on?
Fish out of water.
Okay, yeah, Bill warned me of me being an engineer, I probably couldn't figure this out, but uh. So yeah, we will, uh, I'll start by providing a construction update. I imagine if you get outside and wander downtown, you probably have noticed we have construction underway now, so. It's a very impactful project, um, it's not a very simple project, there's everything from a ground tunnel to a hundred year old.
You put the microphone near you, please.
Hundred year old water mains, um, services, the streetscape improvements, certainly, there's a lot to consider. This does interplay with how um the traffic flow and parking will look downtown the next couple of months and which also could affect schedules of such. Would say last week, even though it, you know, it's, it's challenging having construction in locations like this, they did complete two of the more technically uh bigger unknowns, a hundred year old water main, all the valves, everything got replaced in the middle of the intersection. Uh, the food establishments were down with water for even a minute. So our guys worked with the contractor to try to provide temporary services, it all worked out as planned. And so that is actually complete, which means uh moving into rebuilding the street. And um, and so that's gonna be starting here this week, really. On top of that, I don't know if anyone noticed, but there were cones that got set up on two blocks of Third Street today. Those actually weren't our project's cones. Um, Lumen, I guess, it was requested quite some time ago, they're moving a overhead fiber line across the street. It sounds like it's a one day, maybe a one and a half day project. They're working with the community center to make sure that um their operations are not impacted uh for the food drive. I think it's scheduled for this Wednesday.
It is, yeah.
So, uh, they are aware of that and, you know, on top of that, you know, Sarah helped put out a quick press release, just noting what's going on on Third Street, because it's different from our project. And I think on top of that, I'd like to note that, you know, we've had several uh meetings with the contractor this past week, just to express the importance of communications with the businesses on this project. Um, and making sure expectations are clear on what's happening when. I think, you know, there's some work that needs to be done there. And so there's been paper mailings, certainly, the city has had uh social media posts, but also uh door to door, uh going to every single business, like, in a couple block radius has happened as well. So a lot of effort has been made to try to improve the communication, because it is an impactful project. So, just briefly, also, this is just a rendering, a second and F, and so to have a better feel for what it might look like this summer and future summers, it'll be a great improvement just for what people see and use. Those kind of um C shaped sort of uh rectangles on each corner, those are uh permanent planters, they'll have irrigation to them for flowers. There'll be some additional tree plantings, new trash cans, uh bike, bike racks on every corner, bump outs, uh stamped brick crosswalks. It'll be a nice intersection once it's complete. Schedule wise, um, I'm not sure, I might need Christie to help clip through these.
Do you want me to do it?
Yeah, you have to clip.
Oh, I can, okay, all right.
All right, so, uh, kind of the project goals of the, well, the schedule that the contractor was given to maintain was to get the second and F intersection and the third and F intersection completed. Do you want to just clip through, there's like, I think?
I'll tell you when to stop.
Yeah.
That's it.
So they are focusing on second and F now, uh, their goal is to be complete by the first of May there. Uh, they'll, like, the benches and some of that may not be in by then, but the intersection should be open to traffic is the goal for that. Third and F thereafter, and then uh be completed early June is the goal there. And then um moving over to second and G. With that, though, there are some water services and repaving of a couple of those streets that uh really are in need of it. And so that's, the, the items in purple, purple are the streets being repaved. And I think it's just fair to note that Second Street's kind of a linchpin with this whole project when it comes to access and whatnot. So that second to third uh zone is a little bit challenging, because um, you know, once Second Street's open, I think turning movements will help with the congestion down there quite a bit. And so that's uh kind of the schedule. I guess before we move on to anything else, does anyone have any questions related to the construction or the timing of these improvements?
I was just, I was asked by somebody how old the water main was.
I believe it's very close to a hundred years old. We had sa, found a stamp on um the G Street main, which I presume was put in about the same time I, it was um nineteen teens, so somewhere in there.
It's time.
Yeah, yeah, and honestly, like, there was a leaky valve at Fourth and G, when we had a leak this winter that, you know, you just start to realize that valves don't all always work when you need them to, when they, they get that old. Also, service lines, um, the EPA has this lead and copper mandate now that requires replacement of galvanized and lead or certain aged water surfaces or materials. And so, yeah, it is time for a lot of that work to be happening.
Great, thank you.
Before we move on to the next slide, I also want to mention the fact, because I've seen this a little bit on social media and some other people asking around town about the timing of this and the fact that it's gonna go into the middle of the summer. And just a reminder, and David had covered this with council back when he introduced this project, but, you know, the reality is, it's a multi-month project and you can't start it until the weather is, is right to do that. And you can't start it just a month or two before the weather goes wrong. So in other words, we have to have a little bit of, of overlap with the, with the primary summer months.
And just to, to let everyone know that we did have a working group of merchants on F Street and we posed different options timing wise, and this is what they gravitated towards.
Correct, yep. All right, next slide, please, Christie.
Uh, so real quick, just a, a brief overview of, of the F Street Plaza that we have had in the past, um, between twenty twenty and twenty twenty-three. Taken a, a variety of forms, um, you know, with a, quite a bit of activation in the street, especially early on. Um, you can tell, though, that at, at sometimes, it hasn't had quite the same level of activation in the street from the businesses. That bottom right uh hand corner picture might get to that a little bit. But um, just to kind of remind you, uh, what it's looked at, liked at various points. Go on to the next slide, please. So, um, you've all heard a lot of pros and cons around uh the, the closure of, of F Street uh to vehicles in the summer. We'll quickly go over some of the most common ones. Um, pros that we've uh heard include business capacity expansion, pedestrian safety, uh during the, the busiest months, um, when everybody's out there, the, the more relaxed feel of the plaza. And also opportunity for additional activities and events there. And I'm sure there's a, a host of other uh pros that people have talked about. The cons, you know, there are, there is a reduction of parking spaces. I believe uh the two blocks alone between Sackett and Second, uh, what takes about forty parking spaces, approximately somewhere in there?
Twenty-five a block.
Okay, twenty, so maybe around fifty, actually, just for that seg, segment there. Um, there's some conflicts with the traditional parade routes, uh, reduced accessibility to businesses for ADA uh folks. And uh, of course, disrupted traffic flow through downtown, which we're gonna have anyways because of the construction this year. But um, and again, I'm sure there are others that people could come up with. Next slide. Diesel's gonna talk quickly about the parades.
So there's obviously, there has historically been quite a bit of conversation about parades and the F Street closure and uh the reality of being able to do them or not being able to do them. And I feel like we, uh, there's a lot of emotion involved, um, in previous years when we had this discussion, so we're gonna try to keep it pretty bare bones. It, it's a parade. Um, we, we have two kinds of parades, vehicular parades and walking parades. Um, some are, require more space than others. Uh, the vehicular parades that happen in the summer months traditionally during the closure, or would, would be during the closure, would be Memorial Day, fibark and the Fourth of July. These are fire trucks, really, let's just leave it at fire trucks. Um, they need a lot of space and with the closure, with the business expansion, that space was hard to come by. Now, I will point out, I believe that a walking parade, even last year, with the correct, with the way the lease was writ, or not last year, the previous years of the expansion, um, the way the lease was written, we could have had walking parades through down, through the closure. Um, it was really hard to communicate that, that there's supposed to be a ten foot easement to be clear through the middle of the, of the expansion at all times. Um, and I think this um probably next slide is gonna help a lot in explaining, and I'll let Bill, he's got a whole, this is, this is the, this is the flashing lights.
Yeah, yeah, hold on one second.
This is the flashing lights, yes, be careful, Aaron, this could be where it goes.
Close your eyes, Aaron. The, the primary question we're gonna get to tonight that we need to know is whether or not you all would like to close it, F Street, this summer, um, to create the F Street Plaza. If that is, if the, if the answer to that is yes, to some extent or another, then this is the, the next step of questions that we'll be getting into. Um, but we put this slide together to give you a sense of what the previous closures um have looked like from the business side of things. Um, as Diesel was alluding to, we have required that there be a minimum of ten feet of passage in the past, um, for people to, to get through and also to allow for emergency access. Ten feet is just wide enough to get a, a fire truck through it. And so in the past.
Have a parade with a fire truck.
Correct, not with people wa, walking along the sides of the fire truck and you've got spectators and everything else. So what this shows is that in the past, uh, the businesses have been able to expand out to the yellow, between the curb and the yellow line, and then leaving that ten foot uh clearance in the middle. Next click, please. If we are going to allow for vehicular parades through F Street, um, and be closing down F Street uh the rest of the time for a pedestrian mall or plaza, Fire has uh recommended that we maintain twenty feet of clearance for those vehicles and people walking alongside and uh all the spectators and everything else, which would mean that the businesses would only allow, be allowed rather to put their semi-permanent furniture um out into the street between the curb and the red line. Um, so only eight and a half feet, which is approximately the same width as a parking space. So that significantly reduces the um, the area that would be available to the businesses for permanent structures, of which several of the businesses downtown already have because of the previous years. But what it also would allow for, and, and one more click, please, would be this additional five feet where they could potentially expand with temporary seating and tables, for instance, if they wanted. Stuff that could be removed in a jiffy for the purpose of a parade or whatnot. Now, I think there are plenty of questions that are out there as far as, you know, who is gonna be interested in expanding out into just the eight and a half feet versus the, the thirteen feet before? But that's part of what we're gonna be posing to you all today. Go ahead and uh click to the next one.
So, and, sorry, Christie, could you click one back? Um, I will point out that the, the um, one of the reasons why we had trouble enforcing the lease um in past years is because it happened so fast the first time in twenty twenty, that we mentioned that we were going to ex, uh, expand and the state allowed for those expansions. And certain businesses built their facilities without us determining what the lease was. So they had semi-permanent structures in that five feet, feet, and in some cases, all the way up to the ten feet. And so that made it really hard to be able to say, just push your stuff. The, the semi-permanent structures specifically, let's think of the Current's patio, um, here's the Scoop patio, and then in the summertime, Amika's tent, um, riveting. The, those came out past that eight and a half feet. So what we're saying is that we would be firm to say, your semi-permanent structures can go out to eight and a half feet. And then between that and the, between the yellow and the red line, you need to be able to move it so that we can have a parade.
So as it stands, if you look at the semi-permanent structures that currently exist, you know, Current's, Amika's, maybe here's the Scoop, how far out do they come?
Just to the eight and a half foot line, the red line.
Okay.
So they stay?
Yes.
Okay.
Those are the permanent street patios.
Yeah, okay.
And then there was a, a, a tent, there, again, people were kind of throwing as much as they could together, creating their own structures, and they infringed, we didn't have our rules yet.
Right.
And so kind of this reset to say, no, seriously, these are the rules. I know you had this tent, you're gonna have to have a different one, potentially. So, next slide. Um, the other thing to consider is that um, first to Sackett on F, uh, no matter what happens, we're gonna need to keep everything temporary until after fibark. So, um, they can't put the rides, the slides, um, in those areas, uh, if there's more patios, then. Um, they have worked out a system around the Current's patio. So the Current's patio essentially grandfathered in as being there and have been worked around in the last year. And the other things like if um, the Slida Bicycle Company, if you remember their setup, that would make the carnival impossible. So they can put up temporary anything until through fibark, um, and then after fibark weekend, they could go with a more permanent setup if they wanted.
So last slide before we hand it back over to Christie. So again, just kind of summarizing everything as far as the, the dates of anticipated uh finalization of construction of the intersections, the right of way. Then we have the remaining area here as the, the question mark, that, that's in the, the turquoise, um, and, and the yellow, uh, excluding the portion that Diesel just talked about for fibark in there. Um, I'll close with just saying, one thing to keep in mind as you all discuss uh these decisions is the, the overall feel. If, if we are going to close it down and make it just a pedestrian plaza, um, as you can tell from the photos that we had before, the more activated that the area is, the more lively it tends to be and feel. And if it is not activated, it's gonna have a very contrary um sort of result to what I think the intended goal is. So with that, I'm gonna pass it over to Christie for the questions that we have.
Do you all want to jump into questions now and we'll discuss?
Have you want to have questions unrelated to these questions, anything you, any comments before we get there?
I do.
Go ahead.
Um, oh, that slide that was just up there.
Sure.
Um, the one with, so I went for a drive downtown today because I hadn't seen it yet. And so my question is, it took me a while to find an actual spot to park in before I could just walk down the street for a second and peek in the hole. If we closed it to car traffic, we would be losing more parking spaces. And how many spaces are you losing with the construction that's going to be going on during that? So I'm getting, we're already losing spaces if we close it, we're losing more with construction, lots more, correct?
Yeah, as noted, I, I would say twenty-two to twenty-five spaces per block is kind of an average, you know, if you have patios, you take a few out here and there. But, so, as you can see in the purple, it, it, the construction is gonna evolve as a, they aren't gonna tear out all the streets in purple at one time. But it's a little bit challenging to park on certain ones, certainly with the utility work being done, it's gonna start to kind of tighten back up again. But I think you could certainly expect that Second Street's gonna be about half capacity, so maybe with two blocks, half that, as many twenty-five less spots for a while.
Through the summer?
Through uh mid part of July is what it's kind of looking like.
During our peak parking season.
Yeah, it, hopefully, it's, construction goes quicker, but I think that's what we could estimate it to be.
Okay, that was my, that was my only question.
Anyone else?
Um, I just, this is what I assume and I'm gonna make sure this is correct, we don't have any construction going on during. We don't have any construction going on during FIBARC. Is that correct?
Certainly not on F Street. There is, there are other components, um, such as, I'm just looking at, there is a, a French drain going in the alley, uh, between Sucasa and, um, for street flooring. They may be working on that project during FIBARC, but nothing on the S Street corridor.
And somebody asked me about that today. I'm like, I'm pretty sure it should all not be during FIBARC, so I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions before we move into the prescribed questions?
Yeah.
Um, I just had a qu- quick thing. So, you know, we had those multiple meetings with this F Street Working Group, and one of the things that came up in that, e- e- even from people who, uh, just a year or so ago were really adamantly in support of the closure, where they said, you know, maybe we take a step back, you know, because we had Ryan Short came up and spoke and we got feedback on the different designs that he put together. But one of the things that came forward is, let's play the long game a little bit on this, and they seemed very comfortable for 2025, kinda just pushing pause. And so I was, so it's, it's interesting to me that it's coming back up, and I'm not saying I'm against it or I'm for it, but I just wanted to throw that out there.
Pushing pause on what?
On the closure, uh, uh, because with all the construction that was going on and the fact that they thought we could be more thoughtful and take time to work more on some of these design concepts, so I just wanted to-
That's interesting. I didn't, I didn't see it as a full stop pause, I saw it as more of like a implementing ways now to have it be a part of that long game as far as, um, activating more, um, pedestrian space, so whether that be temporary, like couple, like four days a week, um, or whether that, you know, be a way of gauging the public on like the superblocks idea had come up, but I think it was just like-
There was a lot of information, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, the, yeah, the i- the idea of, um, seeing how we can find a compromise, not fully putting it on ice, but that's what I-
Yeah, I think that's why we're here, 'cause there was a lot of information in all of those meetings and we all kind of walked away with a, a different understanding of what, um, 'cause I heard that as well, right? The, um, let's take some time to think about what we wanna do, and since there'll be construction and it'll be closed anyway, it'll give us an opportunity to really think about it and how to work it, so, um, yeah, I, I, with you. I'm sorry, I'm, yeah.
I was, just wasn't sure if I needed to plan a trip to the audiologist.
No, I don't, yeah.
I mean, the, the businesses that are, are reaching out to me, they just wanna know what it's gonna look like, so they know what to invest-
Right.
-in.
Yeah.
'Cause it's, it's, it always comes back to like, oh, it, it looked really bad, and it's just like, well, you know, let's have something that they can actually invest in, like an actual plan, and then that'll make it look really good. Um, and that's what they, there's that eagerness to do that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, there's just a lot of, you know, confusion around what it's gonna look like from year end to year out, so.
And before we get to your questions, um, we are gonna have the, the bollards that go up and down.
They, they don't go, we will have bollards, they do not go up and down, they unscrew and are removed, that's not-
They don't like-
It sounds super fancy if it goes up and down.
And apparently the-
And not, I know.
The unscrewing is, is-
Yeah.
Delegated to the Ward Three representatives.
Right, yes. You get a special key to the city.
Okay.
That's the buck to you.
I'll do it on my way to Speedy's, I got it.
So yes, bollards, they are not mechanical.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yep.
They'll still look really cool.
David just would use the mouse to actually, you know?
Yeah.
Use some software.
Yeah.
Any remote, at all, your fan remote.
Six or seven clicks.
All right, we'll, we'll just check in on this and then, um, so the first question is really easy. So, understanding that there are going, that there are kind of layers to this closure, right, that we just went through, what's council's direction on the closure for F Street, considering the second to third wouldn't be until, you know, mid-July after G Street's done, so there will be, there will still be some movement on what is closed, because from second to halfway between second and third, because of the construction, it just cannot be just completely locked off if, even if council says yes. So between FIBARC parade and the construction, there still will be some room for adjusting a closure.
I say don't close it, have Diesel standing at the crosswalk-
Sure.
-and make you sign a waiver.
Sure.
Because that's what we needed to do in the eighties when they ripped the sidewalks out and tore everything up. It was super dangerous to get to the front door of a building, we still did it because we wanted to do business, you know? Uh, and so, it's just too much.
QR codes.
Or QR codes, however you want us to do it.
I used a lot of those back in the eighties, yeah.
I'd like to see it closed this year, you know, implementing the, you know, the setbacks and stuff that they showed us today, you know, so that we can, you know, we can still, you know, do, you know, our parades and, and, and everything, you know, everybody, keep everybody happy in that way, but, um, yeah, just, I mean, the, what, what these guys have kinda showed us today that, that can happen, but I do wanna, I would like to see, I guess, more of the, the business owners downtown take more of a, you know, like a, a stand and, and really take charge of what's gonna happen on the street and really, really come to us, to us and, you know, and let us see what they, what, what their ideals are and, and really have them take charge, take lead of kind of what it's gonna look like, uh, themselves, you know, kind of, uh, working alongside with us as well, is what I'd like to see.
Thank you.
So after looking at, when I went downtown today and I looked at the parking spaces and I look at the parking spaces, the closures and the opening, I would prefer that it stay open to car traffic this, this year, um, just because there's gonna be so many limited spaces already, um, with the closures and it puts more traffic on the side streets, it limits your ADA parking, all of it. Um, so I would prefer, and the parades, I definitely want, no matter what happens, the parades, I, I did not like your question about rerouting them again to the other streets and such, I know you had to put it in there, um, but that is not-
We're just here to provide options.
Nope, that is not from what I'm hearing from, you know, the constituents. They definitely want all of those, those three parades to go down F Street, and so that's my preference.
Okay.
Who wants to weigh in next? Go ahead.
My preference would be to see it closed with that, um, adaptation that we just discussed for the parades, where the, um, the businesses are able to use the, the easement to eight-point-five feet so that we can have kind of the, the best of all the worlds that we heard about with, um, having the street closure and the parades, and then I just wanna remind everybody that the ADA spots remain on the corners as well, they don't go away. So I think it's really, I appreciate all the work of staff and coming up with the best possible plan. It's unfortunate that we're not gonna get a feather in our cap for this one because, you know, half, you know, like we've heard, half of the community is for it, half is against it, but, um, I really miss having it closed personally. I appreciate the walkability and the vibe downtown that we get from that.
Thanks.
Uh, yeah, yeah, that. Also, I think it's just gonna be, it's just, I think it'll be good practice to see how we can move forward, like in the future, have these elements, like being able to maneuver everything to have that parade while at the same time allowing businesses to invest in like those things like Parklets that they're interested in and what, what their, uh, you know, what their impact on that space can be, if we give them that chance, I really think that they'll, they can come up with something really great. Um, and all to have the system in place that's, that we could, you know, have a, a compromise if it is just like a similar discussion to the access to, to Tenderfoot, which is just like, if we need to, we can shut it down or open it up in a pretty easily, not as painful way, is my hope.
Thanks.
Um, I would also like to see it closed this summer. Um, I'll, for mainly a lot of the same reasons that have already been stated. Um, yeah.
And my thought, a couple of things. One, I think the parades are really important, I like the idea of what's being presented, but I think it's really important that we have the ability to have the truck parades. I mean, if you look at the Memorial Day and the July Fourth parades, there are veterans' parades and we have ve- some of their veterans, I think, uh, there's one, one gentleman who's in his nineties, and some of these people, you know, they fought in Korea, you know, to, to ask them to walk from the park down is, is, is too much, and I, I don't, I think that's really, really important, um, to me. Um, I would like, you know, maybe to have some conversations around, you know, where we have it blocked off, if we can create ways for the ambulatory challenge where drop-offs can occur, you know, or maybe they put, would put the hazards on for a few minutes so they could maybe walk whoever needed to be walked down to the store, then they could park and then come back and meet the person, just to try to be as sensitive as we can to people that can't do what a lot of us can, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Okay. We'll look, so, we're gonna go with the if yes, and then we'll go through these questions and we'll see if we're still where we want to be. Okay, so staffers recommending that businesses from second to second be allowed to expand the beginning of May first. Okay, okay. Um, uh, so if you'll, if you remember back to David's, um, pres- part of the presentation, um, we, we need to keep F Street from second to third open while G Street is being worked on, like, we need to have that available. And that will, that work is anticipated to be completed in mid-July-ish, so we can't close F Street between second and third at that time, it, it won't work. If, um-
I just wanna note, in the packet, that, uh, actually said early June.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, I just wanna mention that it's actually mid-July-ish, that, that area is gonna need to be used for construction staging and, and actual work.
Yes, thank you, that we, we updated that, um, today, um, during our meeting. So, um, we can then, uh, close F Street between second and third after that work is completed, if council would like, or we can leave that portion open to vehicle traffic for the summer.
And is this the same, like, half of the block, like, the portion?
Yeah, that's generally what has been.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Who wants to begin?
Yeah, the, um, the theme of the, the outreach to the, uh, businesses was that, um, it was preferred if there was gonna be a closure that this would be, this, this portion would be included.
So we'd have to close it and then reopening, open it when we move to G Street construction?
Right now, it is closed because of where construction is happening.
Yeah.
Uh, but yes, yeah, um, David, do you wanna?
Well, it might be easier, hate to, if you wanted to look at the map again, it, with all the, the Second Street work, was it sheet three there?
This one or no?
No, the, that one.
Next one, can I clip through? I think the challenge is, you know, that you have two blocks of Second Street that have some infrastructure work happening, so let's just say they're working on one side, uh, without that half-block being open to vehicles, it, it's, it's a dead end, um, you're coming into a dead end there. And I think the contractors, just them alone, will need a way to get in and out of their job site, you know, they can't just back everything in from one end and keep going out, there's just not enough room to stage your materials and back in a tandem dump truck and concrete truck, whatever else is there at the same time. That's why I, I believe really that Second Street work needs to get completed before that second to third, um, half-block is-
So it'll stay, right, so it will stay in the state that it's in right now, right, with the closed because of construction until that intersection at third is completed, and then it will open it, because, um-
Yeah, it's, correct, you're right.
Right, then it'll be open.
I see what you're saying.
Um, then I just lost it, um, sorry. I think it'll stay open then until at the end of July, right? Until the, until the work on G Street is completed, that block would stay open to vehi- vehicular traffic.
Realistically, I think once one of those blocks on Second Street is done and there's another way out, it could probably be set, it's just, to give a date on that, it's a little challenging right now, it could be late June, um, you know, I'd say as soon as possible and it can function, we can notify those businesses perhaps, uh, that it's, you know, we're ready to do a full shutdown or something.
Is that really the staging for the paving though? In July?
Not necessarily, I, I think they could probably work within the Second Street corridor, so, yeah. I know, it's, it's kinda complicated, the, the schedule I got from the contractor, I think, was fifty lines of activities and it's, it is hard to explain all the sequencing right now, but I think we could, don't you think, there's a few enough businesses-
Yeah, I mean, we can, if the council wants it to be closed the way it has been in the past at the half-block, staff can figure out and ensure that businesses and council are made aware of when that would happen, instead of trying to figure out the date, um, or obviously the month that it would happen, like, we can-
When are we, when are we playing on open the whole street back up at the end, at, at the end of summer?
I think that's one of our questions, that's another question, we're not there yet.
Getting ahead of himself. Well, that kinda determines if that's worth, you know, closing or opening, opening and closing.
Well, at this point, um, if the, if we're making a pedestrian plaza, the council in the past has reopened it to vehicular traffic after Labor Day weekend, like, the Tuesday after Labor Day, so that is generally-
Sure.
But again, you guys will make that decision.
But I mean, you think about, these businesses make the lion's share of their revenue during these months, so even if, I mean, I'm sure they'd much prefer if the opportunity was there to go Memorial Day to Labor, but if they had the option of, you know, say July Fourth through Labor Day versus not, they're gonna take that because that could be the difference, it's big.
So yes, close half-block when it is feasible based on the construction schedule? Okay, can you flip to the la- I don't have the questions in front of me.
Okay, where's the next question?
Okay. Um, whoa, I just, for the record, Bill wrote these questions, and so they're very wordy. He's not listening, so that's good. Okay, I believe we already answered this question, limiting the expansion space of semi-permanent street furniture to the eight and a half feet so that we can have parades, right?
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, next, is there anything else council would like to see to enhance the pedestrian mall plaza experience and make it a success? I add the caveat that there are no budgeted funds for this.
We can't get thirty giant rabbits?
Right, we cannot.
Too soon, Mayor, too soon.
Leaning into the discussion.
Wow.
Could there be a, a splash park in, in the, in, in the-
We could get some hoses out there or have the fire department open up some, uh, fire hydrants.
Put a couple leaky valves back in there.
Could find some leaky valves.
Kids would love a splash park down there. Is there like a-
Hearing nothing.
I think the actual-
Let's see what Public Arts Commission forces.
All of the actual construction that we're doing right now, I think, is the enhancements that we wanna see.
Yeah, yeah. That's a good way to phrase it.
Thank you.
Everything else is on the business, the businesses need to- Anybody's ass, 'cause I'll just say that.
All right, so then, Councilman Stevens, what date was the coun- would the council, um, want the closure to end? Again, it's been sometime after Labor Day, sometimes it's, you know, the Tuesday after Labor Day, or maybe I-
We went to the end of September.
We went to the end of September once, so.
And I, and I think, I remember from back then, a lot of the businesses felt that maybe that was a little too long, at least back then.
Sure.
About September fifteenth.
Leave him, leave him wanting more.
Labor Day.
Right.
I like September fifteenth.
September fifteenth.
What day of the week is that?
I like Labor Day.
It doesn't matter, September fifteenth.
I like Labor Day.
Yeah.
Then you just, whatever it is on Labor Day.
September fifteenth is a Monday.
That sounds like a great day to take things down. Okay. Okay, does everyone feel comfortable with this? I will review quickly. So we're closing F Street to vehicular traffic based on the constructions and FIBARC schedule as, has been presented, we will be putting the information out- We will be putting the information out and will keep you as well as business owners informed. I would ask that, you know, we put it in the Mountain Mail, we put it with the Arc Valley Voice, we have a Facebook page that we keep updated. We do our best to get out to every single business. If they're not open when we go or if somebody doesn't get the flyer that we hand out, we apologize. We are asking that we will be as forward as possible in getting this information out. If you have questions, please check our Facebook page. Please reach out to us because, you know, sometimes not everybody gets communicated with 100%, but we are trying. So don't hesitate to reach out. So we will close it to cars, some of it starting on May 1st, everything ending on September 15th. We will ensure that vehicular parades can utilize F Street by having the eight and a half feet for semi-permanent structures. There aren't any other enhancements that we plan on doing because the construction is going to make things look awesome. We will also research having drop-offs for folks at the intersections or where it could be, it could be feasible if they need to escort someone to a business.
Bike taxis?
I don't have any, but if someone wants to start a business, I think that it could be lucrative. I know. Diesel, David, Bill. Did I miss anything or do you have any questions before we leave the room? Free stooges, who's standing?
I, I have two, two comments. I really seem to recall and, and people can correct me if I'm wrong, but potentially the first year, you commented that there was a year that it stayed open way too long. I feel like it was the first or second year where it stayed open almost until Halloween. So like that was the year that I think was like, whoa, that's way too long. I'm not sure about the September year. The other thing is I just want to be clear also that we're getting direction right now that the first to second will not be able to put up semi-permanent structures until after FIBARC festival.
Correct. Thank you for that. We'll go down the road, David, so you guys don't get confused.
I, I think we'll just make sure to keep council abreast of the construction schedule and when that half block is open for, I guess, open for closure. And also I had shared, I know with Christie, some park, parklet painting I've seen other communities do, like in that parking strip, so where someone doesn't have a patio or maybe isn't even expanding, maybe there could be some art programs that could incorporate into the street and make it feel a little bit more vibrant. So I think that's something that could be done on a budget perhaps.
Absolutely.
I have a question about the semi-permanent structure. So the one in front of Currents, because everybody's driven by that one, is that a semi-permanent?
Yes.
It's permanent.
Well, based on our, based on our definitions right now, that would be a semi-permanent structure. We are, it is, it doesn't leave, but any business could put up one of those in the parking space and that is what we're calling semi-permanent. Because technically, Chris Tracy, I've seen him push it. Like it's not a building, right? So like it is semi-permanent. So, but.
For this discussion, for this discussion, it is not a semi-permanent structure. It does not need to be moved for FIBARC.
Where it sits now.
Where it sits now.
But if they purchase one, if someone were to purchase one of these and put it in their spot, they can't put it up till after FIBARC. And next year, they don't have to move it before FIBARC.
Probably would, yes.
So we have, there, there's another part of the code that pertains to patios, which is what Amica is, Currents, the, here's the scoop, where they pay to have that up all the time.
Yes.
Yeah, so and within our code currently, we can only have one per block. So if someone, yeah, so if someone.
There's only one restaurant on that block.
If that, if that helps.
And just to clarify, they, they could go ahead and actually put a semi-permanent structure in the parking space, but then they would be required per our lease to remove it during the week of FIBARC and then they could put it back as well. That's another opportunity or option for them.
Okay. That was it, thank you.
And I just, I just want to say that I'm really, really happy to see all the work that staff has put into this. I mean, you provided us such great information, options, and I think this is a great example of how well we can work together and, and how much we rely upon you for your feedback and expertise. And I just am really grateful for all the hard work and thoughtfulness that went into this, so thank you.
Could I have one final question?
Yeah.
I'm hoping that there will be something on the homepage of the site that says, "Construction plans here," you know, a link where people who want to know what's going on, you know, can see the plan and maybe a tentative schedule.
We have a, go ahead.
Yeah, we have a City Projects page online currently.
And it's on the front page.
City Projects, okay. And, and there's a link to it on the front page? That's where I want to be able to send people.
A QR code?
There's a QR code.
Good.
That's a good point, Councilman, I'm popping for it.
We're all done. The next slide is if no.
Yeah, I don't Facebook.
I don't Facebook either.
Just, I, I think tomorrow night's going to be faster even.
Thank you, everybody.
Going to be faster.
You got what you needed?
Yeah, don't jinx it, Christie.
Christie, you're good?
I'm great, thank you.
Thanks, everybody.